Good evening and welcome to the October 7th Newburgh City Council meeting. I call the meeting over. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilor McBride?
Here.
Councilor Wheatley?
Here.
Councilor Yarnell-Hallman?
Here.
Councilor Pilberg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacher?
Here.
Councilor Cloyde?
Here.
And Councilor Carman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Move right on. Will, you're up.
Good. Could I have the focus news?
Yep.
Thank you. And these are the monthly events for September of 2024. And actually, before we get into all this, I should mention that the Hess Creek repair has just been finished. This was a sewer line and water erosion had exposed the pipe, creating a very real possibility of a sewer leak. And the Public Works crew got out there, they did amazing work, and it is now wonderfully repaired. Way up, way further upstream, when it's just a tiny little creek, but it was enough to wash the pipe almost out. So they fixed it. I was up there looking today, and it's fantastic. Community Development Department approvals of site design review applications happened for two parking area modifications at the college, and Planning Commission approved two vacation rental homes. And the redesignation occurred for the Newburgh Enterprise Zone, authorizing ARE and, of course, in the future, possibly other companies to benefit from that property tax deferral program so as to be able to invest in capital equipment, a very good thing for the city. Other projects included the approval of a partition lot. We had modifications for mental housing intersection requirements for the Kalina subdivision. Many pre-application meetings relating to construction and duplexes and so on, and a commercial building for restaurant use. We had the department applied for it was granted access to an armored vehicle through our government surplus program. This is an MRAP vehicle capable of defeating even fairly large caliber ammunition, and it will provide an extra layer of protection for citizens and officers should it be necessary to respond to an active shooter situation. In other words, the vehicle can be parked so as to block the fire coming from a building, narrowing the scope of the shooter's range of activity for public safety. Here is a picture of the vehicle. And the officer's obviously been painted in our colors, and the officer's been practicing driving it, and so on, to make sure it is safe, may this never have to be used for its intended purpose. It's a welcome piece of equipment to keep us safe and the public safer when extreme or violent events unfold in our area. We're also excited to announce the return of our Citizens Academy. The academy is an in-depth chance for folks to find out what it's like to work in public safety, and there are already thirteen citizens participating in the first cohort. And this will be running through November 19. So if you guys haven't taken this chance to do it, any of you at home as well should consider getting involved and giving it a go, maybe in the next quarter. And here is a bit of information we had about this. And I'll say my wife did this in a much less populous department, obviously Hillsborough. No patch on her guys. I mean, she actually got a lot of good experience out of doing it, and she said it was very worthwhile. City Recorder, starting off in September with some excitement, we shipped our first seventy-five boxes of records off for scanning, officially launching the next phase of our digitization effort. This is directly so as to enhance customer service. People will be able to search for these documents through a web drawer rather than having to run a PRR or an information request, and it will give customers a quicker way to access those documents. Many public information requests are from engineering firms or architects or builders who want asphalt diagrams, and there's always a little time delay while we get those documents, while we package them. This will save some of that time. Engineering, the camera Villa and Ninety-Nine is moving forward, both red light and for speed. Main and Ninety-Nine is waiting for additional information on ODOT infrastructure. And in fact, I can announce that the camera data is now working for the Villa camera, and it will be going live tomorrow, but no citations will be issued, only warnings for the first full month. And of course, this will not impact anyone who obeys the speed limit. Two blocks were resurfaced near Edwards Elementary in the final weeks of September. Luckily, we had a surprising little bit of good weather. And next year, we're going to crack seal and grind it in far more than we did this year, and we're meeting in the winter to plan that out. The Weynuski Storm Outfall Project, July 3rd, City Council awarded it to PIHL Inc. A pre-construction conference was held on July 15. Construction is underway now, and it is scheduled to be finished round about now. I didn't check today if it was done, but this is another CIP project that is going to be finished, if not, if it wasn't finished today, in the very near future. And there are many CIP projects which have now started to get finished, one by one. Finance, during the month of September, finance worked on closing all the books for FY24 to be ready for the annual audit. And as you guys know, this is the focus of our work at this time of year, as the auditors come in and ask us a myriad of questions, looking for all manner of documents. Finance has also been working on the biannual budget process, Operation Quadratic, working with Open Gov towards getting that budgeting, that budget software rolling forward to set up the biannual budget productions, and participating in a multi-department capital project discussion for the next two bienniums. This is something that we've never done before. We are having everybody in the room when we're going through the CIP process. All the department heads are involved, finance, engineering, operations, maintenance. Anyone can weigh in, say, hey, that won't work, that should be done differently, so that it doesn't have to happen on the back end. So this is one of those engineering reforms that we brought in. In Libraryland, September is library card signup month. So this year, we had a booth at the Wednesday Market, September 18th, to promote that. Signed up twelve new library patrons right away, chatting about services. And the end of August, we participated, as we always do, on George Fox University Welcome Weekend, promoting library card signup month to those new students. And actually, we had two teams from the city at that event. One talking about, would you like to be a student commissioner, and the other one telling them about the library. And there is the library booth. Yes, sir. That was, yes, that was not the George Fox picture, that was the Wednesday Market picture. We had a successful serve day as well, which we do every year. Many CFO students come out, help us with chair cleaning, straightening, shelving, inventory checks, looking for missing items using an RFID wand, and that's the thing that bleeps if the book is out of place, and other sorting through historical documents we recently acquired from CPRD. And we will be digitizing all of that stuff. Public Works Plan Operations, it's been a busy month at Treatment and Plant. Summer is typically a sore time, however, we're continuing to work on keeping our solids level down so as to make the PLC replacement work. Hey, that's another capital project that's been in the works for many years, which is now about to end fairly soon. This first piece of the project will have us shut down for two weeks in the composting system, so we have to have the capacity to store solids in the treatment process during that time. Our lab staff completed the annual discharge monitoring report. This evaluates analytical ability of the lab to perform cell fat monitoring. Originally, the results should have been sent a few weeks ago. However, the state has extended their deadline to have all of the results out December, September 25th. And by the time you read this, we should have seen them. Yep. And here's one of our maintenance tasks undertaken recently, a new sewer surface line on Lincoln. And over again to the PLC project. Over the past month, the electrical contractors have completed their installation of new conduit and ducts, fiber communications that is established within new PLC units. Fiber lines have been terminated, network switches installed, and the new network is up and running. And I believe there have been no problems thus far. Joseph, is that right? Everything's going okay with the communications and PLC? Cheers. The consultants have continued to work on the programming part, so with the hardware finished, now it's the programming, making sure that when the buttons are pushed, those servos open and close. And that will be wrapping up fairly soon. And we certainly believe that this one is also going to be finished this year. Public Works Facilities, recent tasks. These things are always going on in the background, setting up, tearing down council meetings, courts, rate review meets, down for rate review, budget meetings, monitor HVAC repairs. These are all just typical things that we do all the time in facilities behind the scenes. And unfortunately, some graffiti had to be removed from a stall in the library. And here is the Elliott Road sample station installed, and a water line repair at Memorial Park. Over to IT happenings, September was a month of both difficulties and successes. One of our core pieces of network equipment began to fail at an accelerated rate, and it caused substantial issues for most staff. This was a core router that had been central to the city's network for a long time, and virtually all internal data was passing through this router. So when it started to fail, it took our network down. IT had been planning the retirement of this router for some time, but because of the number of connections that go through it, it has been very difficult to migrate off to all other devices. That's moving the pathways to other routers. We finally received the required hardware to move the remaining connections over, and that device has now been fully retired, so we shouldn't see that sort of error again. Its physical removal and destruction is scheduled for later this week. By the time you read this, it should have been destroyed. It has happened. You see how cutting-edge this news is? It's also up to you to have to look at the department heads and say, is that thing happening? Can I come by with a sledgehammer and?
You make that happen.
Okay, it's a deal. We've also got interviews for our help desk position left open after corner with mobility to system administrator. We had a massive response to this recruitment, so we're hoping for some fantastic candidates, and everyone is looking forward to the help. HR has been putting a lot of work into recruitments this month, in part due to many talented Newburgh employees successfully winning their recruitments for promotions, and that is always leaves another gap open below. Remember, all recruitments are externally posted and independently point scored with a double blind process, so it's impossible for someone to cook the books. So when one of these folks gets the job, they earned it. We also attended the All Majors Career Fair, put on in George Fox to connect to local students and spread the word about the wonders of working for local government. So that's it for September, and I do have a little bit of extra data here. Recently running recruitments where Utility Technician One and Two, and that was in pursuit of the concrete cement crew, and that's almost finished. IT Help Desk, as discussed. We had an opening for Volunteer Reserve Police Officer, and we had an Operator One opening that's to fill up one of those spots that was filled, was left open by a previous promotion. And I think they just decided to look for new reserves at this time. Is that right, Chief? Awesome. Excellent. On the other side of the report, highest payments recently, visit Newburgh, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five Q4 tourism payment for the Taste Newburgh organization. Do Little Construction, under budget, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars for Suri Steel to rebuild Second Street, and Open Gov, ninety-six thousand three hundred and forty-seven. That is the new software for both the setup and also for the yearly subscription, and that covers things like Cartograph as well as our new, more customer-friendly, we hope, permitting software. And that concludes my City Manager's Report.
Peggy, go ahead.
I have four brief questions. Actually, I think the answers will be great as well. When is the biannual budgeting process starting? Is that next July or 26?
Uh, no, it will be fiscal year 25, so July 1st, 2025.
Okay, thank you. And that armored vehicle that was purchased, that was acquired to a grant, no cost to the city at all?
I would say that with complete accuracy, there has been some hundreds of dollars spent on light bulbs and pain and stuff, but effectively, almost no cost.
And with the digitization of those seventy-five boxes, how many are left? About?
No, there's probably about two hundred and fifty boxes left after that. However, some of those will not go out for digitization either because they contain more sensitive informations that we'll do in-house, or they are going to hit retention, so we're not going to waste the money, so we'll just get rid of it.
And my last question?
Oh, okay.
So with regard to things that can be digitized, easily though, we would be looking at probably eighty or ninety boxes. But the good thing about the finance documents is they retire on such a rapid schedule, we're able to shred those fairly quickly.
Last question is, did students and faculty from George Fox help any other departments on surveying besides the library?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. Do any of you folks know if the serve day kids came into other departments?
Nothing for me.
It appears just the library this year.
Go ahead, Mike.
So this question is for the chief at the red light section there at Villa. So how fast can you go, what's the speed limit before the lights turn on? I'm just asking for a friend.
I believe you can probably tell your friend it's saved for eleven over, or maybe it goes off at eleven, somewhere around there. I won't give you a specific answer.
I'm sure your friends will just take his thing off a little bit.
I'm gonna encourage you to do that.
It is good that the first light has not stained his hands. Public comments, we have no public comments, we're both in public comments. And now we're in new business. Will, who is going to present any utility billing policy update?
The Finance Director.
Good evening. So I have brought up for you, it's informational only tonight, an update for our utility billing policy. And then I have Robin here, who is our utility billing specialist. You see her at the front window if she's coming to pay in person. So if you guys have any technical questions, she'll be here to answer those. Went backwards, sorry.
No worries.
Oh, no, there we go.
You're good.
Okay. So for the policy, so really, the policy hasn't been updated since 2013, which is quite a long time. And kind of going through our current policies and practices, we noticed a lot has changed over the years, and we really just need to get those aligned with the council policy so that we're all on the same page as to what we should be doing. So it's just kind of best practice to be reviewing and updating those policies on a regular basis and looking at what has changed basically since 2020, since COVID hit. The fees comparison, so aside from your monthly fees that you're assessed for your water bills essentially, there's two other main fees that we have on here, the delinquency fees, which are the late fees, and then the reconnection fees, which are if you're shut off, then you're assessed a fee to get turned back on. And so currently, our delinquency fees are twenty dollars and the reconnection fee is fifty dollars. So we did kind of a comparison to other cities around us that are similar size, and we feel comfortable with the fees that we've been charging, so there's no proposed changes to that. We just wanted to kind of see what everybody else was charging and see if we were similar, and it seems that we're somewhat comparable to that, or even a little bit less on the reconnection fees. So just kind of going through the policy on things that we're changing. So for new accounts, one of the main issues that we're changing are related to renters. So we're trying to keep track of what's a, who's a renter and all of those details. And it seems that in the past policies, we've had more information on the landlords, and then we've had landlords be more responsible for unpaid bills by tenants, which I'll get more to later on this. Extensions, so this basically started in 2020. So we've been offering more extensions to help accommodate those who are struggling to be able to pay their bill. So we'll have people call and say, there's no way I can make the payment by this date. I don't get my social security until this date. I've lost my job, but I can pay you by X date. So usually, we have a whole mechanism in our department where we keep track of those, and those are something that we would like to be able to continue offering. Currently, our extensions are up to thirty days. And as you can see around us, that's pretty comparable with the exception of Sherwood, which is only seven days. And again, if somebody calls before the delinquency date and asks for an extension, they are not assessed a twenty-dollar lane fee. For shut offs, so previously, shut offs used to occur on a Wednesday, and now we're doing that on a Tuesday, which is just to allow residents to get more time during the week if they're shut off, to get their water restored before the weekend. So typically, the calls will go out on Monday, and then the shut offs will come on a Tuesday, so that they have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to pay. And that seems to have worked really well. Deadlines to get the water turned back on is now four thirty versus five, which is what it used to be. That's mostly just due to staffing hours. Utility billing window closes at four thirty, and Public Works goes home at five o'clock, so we're trying to keep those within those timeframes. The special exceptions for shut offs, that sort of began again also around 2020. So people will be shut off, and then they'll say, there's no way I can pay you today to get restored, but I could pay you by Friday, or I could pay you next week. And again, we have tracking mechanisms on those in order to restore them the same day and make sure that they pay by that due date. And that's something we're also hoping to continue offering in the policy. And then the minimum balance is now formally established at thirty-five dollars for the shut off. So that's if you're past due with thirty-five dollars or more, you'll be on the shut off list. And we also did a comparison with that to our other entities. And you can see that's also pretty comparable, so there's no proposed change on that as well. There just wasn't, that wasn't formally established in the policy, but that seems to have been what has been happening, so we wanted to put that in the policy so that we're clear on that. Okay, so this is where we come back to the renters. So closing accounts. This has been, seems to have been in the old policy in like a flow chart, but it wasn't really written out. But if a renter leaves a balance owing in excess of five hundred dollars, then the account must go and remain into the owner's name until the balance is paid. So basically, if you owe more than five hundred dollars, you're probably more than two months, you know, delinquent. So then we're asking that it goes back into the landlord's name, and then they're responsible to pay, or it can't go into the next tenant's name. Hopefully, that makes sense. But it's kind of to prevent having the same property with several delinquent balances on it. So that if you're a landlord, you have to make sure that you are in contact with your tenants on this. Payment plans, so previously, the policy only allowed for payment plans after three months. Again, since COVID, we've allowed payment plans to be up to twenty-four months, and that's something we're hoping to continue to offer that makes, if people get behind, it makes it a whole lot easier for people to add an extra twenty dollars to their bill to be able to pay that off rather than, you know, a lot more. And then medical waivers. This was something we had worked with Miller and Ashlan, but medical waivers are allowed if the individual or somebody living in a household suffers from a medical condition that's deemed necessary to have access to water. We don't want to be able to shut you off because you've been delinquent on payments, so we have the medical provider fax us over the form, and that way, we have it on file that they have a medical necessity to have water. And then we renew those each year, and customers are still required to pay their accounts. We just won't be shutting them off due to delinquency. And then liens, this is for exceptional circumstances. If a residential customer accrues an outstanding delinquent balance in excess of two thousand dollars, then the matter will be referred to the city manager for a review of the circumstances as to why they accrued such a large balance. And then the same thing for a commercial customer, if it's a delinquent balance in excess of five thousand dollars, it'll be reviewed. And if the city manager finds it warranted, it'll be given a sixty-day notice to remediate the account, or we could possibly report a lien on the property. And that's really all that's new on the policy. Does anybody have any questions on the policy or anything that's new? Yeah?
Please go ahead.
I totally understand the thought behind it, going to the landowner, the landlord or property owner. Have you had examples? Can you talk a little bit more through when there was like multiple accounts on a property? Because I do think it should, I prefer it follows the renter, but I'm sure that it's difficult to track them down or just talk to them.
Yeah, we've had several examples where it's been the landlord will maybe rent to somebody who they know is not going to pay their bill, or it'll be some sort of circumstance like that, and we'll have several issues where it'll be the same property that they keep renting to, and then we never get to collect from that tenant. And we don't have a lot, if they're a tenant, then we don't have a lot of force of action. We can send them to collection, but leaning on the property, we don't have any force of action because they're not the homeowner. And so that's why we wanted to go back to the old policy where if the landlord had to keep the account below five hundred dollars, or it couldn't be transferred to the new tenant. But yeah, it is going to be kind of controversial on that.
How are you going to determine with existing customer, whether there are any concerns you're aware of?
So I think it'll probably be once we have a new account come on, then when they fill out their new paperwork, it'll be, you have to indicate if you're a renter, and then you have to provide your landlord's contact information. And so then we'll be in contact with the landlord, whether it's property management or just a regular citizen. And so then we can get with them to, you know, have them sign a form that says, we understand we're renting it, and the balance has to be kept below five hundred dollars to move to the next tenant's name. Or they'll be responsible.
Go ahead, Mike.
So do we have a lot of people that are using this twenty-four month payment plan, or pretty much everybody, the date, or?
So we did right after, so during the moratorium after COVID, we had a lot of accounts that were delinquent. I think it was, I forget the dollar amount. we had a lot of accounts that were delinquent, I think it was, I forget the dollar amount, I didn't have. A lot of people use that 24 months to get themselves back into shape. And so we don't have very many people back on that. Do you think we have a lot of people on the 24 month? Just many, maybe three or four?
I know by myself, maybe two.
Okay. Yeah, so not a ton. It was mostly during COVID that people appreciated it because then if they're a couple of months behind, then they're only having to add $20 to their bill to get themselves current.
How many shut offs do we do on a month for non-payment?
I have no information right here. The last, last month, we did 43 shut offs. But if you look at it as a whole, it's less than 1% of our accounts. Yeah, so last month we had 7,517 billings and of that 43 were shut off. So it relatively speaking, it is a low number.
With regard to the $2,000 limit before lien, which is a pro to city manager, so if you have a renter, would you have a renter get to $2,000?
Yep.
Wow, okay. The one thing about putting that bill on the landlord after the renter leaves is that if they know this upfront, then they can make sure that's part of their deposit.
Exactly.
And they'll recoup it and will recoup it. So I don't think it hurts the landlord if they plan accordingly.
That was our hope, was it was something maybe worked into their monthly payment with utilities or it's in the security deposit, something. But it's, we don't have as many that get that high, but we do have a few that are that high for renters.
Uh oh, now I might have just lost my thought on that. I, so we're hoping that landlords would increase security deposits. I feel like that's like our biggest problem right now with the income folks is they can't secure that first and last month plus deposit. So I would not want to see landlords do that, just to be clear.
That's true.
But I, I do also want it to fall that we're, we have a number of folks that were not able to collect on it, so.
That's why I say this one's true.
Yeah. Yeah. And how many properties, you had said that there are a number of properties that this is a reoccurring issue? Like they may be renting to friends with knowledge that they may not be able to have a collection mechanism? So how, are there a certain, like, how many properties do you think this is?
I don't think it's a whole lot, I would probably say it's less than 20. Yeah, so I would. Yeah, so I would say relatively speaking, it's probably less than 20. So. If that's a huge discussion point, feedback that I'm getting, that's something we can certainly look at on the end of the policy. It was just something that I know was in the, in the flow chart from the old one. And then I think somehow that practice got lost. And so it was just something we were revisiting when looking at the old policy to what we're doing currently and why did we stop doing that?
Thank you. Nobody wants? All right, everybody's happy with the foot, where's, sounds good. All right, let's move on.
Let me help you get there. Second, I'll have you right there.
Thank you.
No worries.
And so as we begin to look at, first of all, I guess to give this some context, we're at kind of a very interesting place right now in terms of our city just in general. We've, we've just finished almost all of our internal reforms that we've been working on for years. And so we're beginning the process of looking forward to several very large, very expensive capital projects that the city has to build in the future. And so in order to do that, we always knew that at some point we would have to develop a long-range financial plan. And so I gave us a very great deal of thought over the last month and Katie and I have had very many conversations about this. And we really boiled it down to several distinct questions that we really need some guidance from council on in order to be able to develop such a plan and then to be able to with confidence move forward with some of these really big capital projects. So the purpose of this presentation is really not to seek, not to put councillors on the hot seat, right? Not looking for answers today, but simply to cover what those really big questions are so that we all understand for future work sessions. Okay, and of course, this is within council goal six, objective number four. Ensuring that the city has a long-term financial plan that supports its goals and objectives. But we should literally rejoice that we are never at this point where we can begin this work, meaning that our internal operations are going very, very smoothly now. And thank all of you, actually. So fiscal decisions, these are points that will be able to build a long-range financial plan. In the very near future, the city manager will be bringing some critical decisions before council that will lead to the creation of a long-range financial plan as specified in council goals. And to start to create that draft, staff will need an answer to these key questions, which will shape the destiny of this city over the next 10 years or even perhaps more. I assume that the council will probably desire a separate work session or work sessions to derive these answers to these questions. I might be wrong, some of them might just be so clear that a unified decision can be made very quickly. First, I want to cover what our strategic cash reserves look like in key areas. And recall that most funds, except for the general fund, can only be spent on their intended and collective purpose. Please remember, of course, that this isn't simple and some reserves will always have to be kept back for contingencies. So for example, if there is $12 million in a certain fund, of course, we cannot dedicate $12 million to a capital project. A margin will have to be kept back, perhaps two or three million. The bulk of our staff are paid their wages from the funds 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, and 17. And the general fund, 01, pays the bulk of half of our staff salaries. And then those utility fees, as you all know, pay the other side of the house, which is the public works and engineering staff. The general fund was predicted to be in the region of $5.1 million at the end of this fiscal year. I intend to take a snapshot on this after the bulk of the property taxes have been collected. So we'd be, we'd be talking about the end of the year when we would see with more clarity where the general fund is heading to at the end of the financial year. Fiscal, yes, because we will have the property taxes in our accounts November, basically. And we'll be able to see how we're trending with a lot more clarity. However, we are facing some headwinds and in fact, another headwind emerged that's not on this slide, which is that the pairs rate, which was predicted to increase by 3%, we've now been informed just recently that pairs rate is going to increase by 6%. And that's going to affect both our general fund employees and it's also going to affect our public works employees. And if you have questions about that notification and what we now know, I'm going to defer to Katie on that if there are questions later on that point. At this time, I am anticipating that this fund is going to decline sharply as a result of these headwinds that we have faced and then we will move on about. So we have some delays in selling the Butler property. We have the SR role default, which has occurred, and we have an unexpected increase in the pairs rate. Fund two, Streets, is in very poor condition after the expenses connected to Elliott Road. This isn't a surprise, but we do know that Fund two is going to be in recovery mode for a while. This means that we are not proposing any CIP projects that are intensive to this area, bar possibly River Street, but that would be backed by Nura. So that is one of our conversation points. The wastewater fund is currently healthy and may end the year with a balance of about $15 million. The water fund is also healthy and is predicted to have a balance of perhaps $10 million. And in our thinking around the water plant design and construction, this is a key advantage.
Excuse me, Will, these fund balances do not include SDC balances, correct?
The building fund three has a very good cash balance and is expected to end the year with $3 million and only very few staff are directly paid salaries from that fund. Fund 17, the stormwater, has a decent balance as the demands put on this fund are lighter and is expected that the end of the year may see about $2.7 million in reserves. Now, let's have a look at system development charge balances. This was the cash on receipt as of September of 2024. So we have approximately $7 million in Streets System Development Fund. We have only $291,000 in Stormwater. We have $14 million in Wastewater. And we have $290,000 in Water. And you can see that these numbers are lopsided. This is because the system development charge reforms that we all worked on together will take a while to take effect. And this was one of the indicators that told staff that there was something wrong with the SDC tables back in 2022. They will normalize, but this is the cash on hand right now. We have good liquidity in wastewater and streets. If the old SDC model had been designed more rationally, these reserves would be more balanced today. Here is what we think we know right now. Engineering design work will need to check and further refine these numbers. And the first CIP meeting has already occurred and the next CIP meeting will be on the 21st. Once again, all of the people involved will be in the room to critique things internally before it comes to council. It may be that the new water treatment plant, whose design I have scaled back dramatically, may be perhaps $30 million if we're lucky and we build the bare minimum that we need. That would be a nine-megagallon plant with no conference spaces or ancillary rooms. The design would have to be able to be expanded at future date, however. We have discovered that both plants can be operated together to provide very long-term water production if designed that way. So if these two of our water plant needs might be actually another retrofit of the old plant so that both plants can run in tandem, that's part of our thinking right now. A new oxidation ditch will be needed sometime. This may cost something in the region of $15 million as supporting infrastructure will need to be upsized or replaced. The River Street project may cost something like $10 million, but maybe less if we can value engineer it. The city is currently carrying existing debt from the water treatment plant of about $17 million. And that's wastewater, so that's wastewater debt. Everything costs twice what it costed before the pandemic. I've given considerable thought to the six decision points connected to these biggest scale projects that confront us. And in the finest tradition of public service, these are decisions that council makes norm. We need to know an affirmation that the removal of the communication tower debt early is still desired in light of our recent issues impacting the general fund. To be clear, we could solve our short-term general fund problem by stopping the debt reduction plan and hoping the SR revenue picks up next year, but that is an uncertain future. If we stop debt reduction, there will probably not be time to start it up again later because it would naturally, the debt would naturally retire in 2028 anyway. So we would be missing an opportunity to get that debt off early. And by doing so, we would be missing the opportunity to take that line item off the municipal billing statement. That's the trade-off that we have to confront based upon the SR role default and some of our other headwinds that we're seeing in the general fund. The second thing is staff would like a commitment to raising the property tax rate as already approved by a vote of the people. If the general fund would otherwise be predicted to decline by some metric, I don't know what that is right now. So I'm not here with the answer, right? Perhaps it would be something like if the general fund was going to decline by 10%, then we would commit to doing that vote. Or it might be 5%, I, I don't know yet.
So are you talking about the annual 3% raise that we can if we want to?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Then you said it's already approved by a vote of the people. So how, if it's already approved, then why are we going to think about approving it?
The capability to do it was what was, what was voted on by the whole city previously, but the decision still lies with budget committee and council. Now, one thing to say about this is that we were really optimistic that by this point, we would be predicting not needing to take that property tax increase this year. We'd have had a really good feeling going into this budget cycle, given that we developed some new revenue streams. And therefore, my mother-in-law, who's on social security and nothing else, wouldn't have to see an increase in our property tax rate, but I can't in good conscience not bring up the headwinds that we're seeing. It might be better as part of a financial plan to come up with something that is a measurable decision point indicator that we can look to year in and year out. None of us obviously want to raise this if we can avoid it. So can we agree on some formula to regularize this decision so we can plan more effectively based upon some threshold? A decision about paying off the city's DEQ debt early or not, we've gone back and forth on this time and time again, thinking about the financial model. And this has given Katie and I stomach ulcers, I might even say, right? Should we consider working to reduce the DEQ debt early? Or because it's at a lower rate of interest, should we let that one ride while we work on trying to avoid new debt with these capital projects? So, yeah.
What's the amount of that DEQ debt?
It's 17-odd million dollars.
That's the wastewater debt you refer to.
From previous upgrades to the wastewater plan. Now I've got one of our accountants right now working on lots of modeling to look at what it would cost to retire that debt early or not, so I can bring more data to council later. Yeah. Okay, the fourth thing is, and this has actually been very, very helpfully answered very quickly by Miller Nash, thank you, James. We had this as a question mark. Can system development charges, and this was a brilliant idea that Amir came up with, which no one had ever heard of before? Can we use system development charge funds to lend the money to ourselves? Which means when we pay that loan back, we're paying ourselves back, which means that that liquidity is available for other capital projects. It has been ascertained that this is legally possible. It has been ascertained that this is legally possible. There's a caveat. The repayment term has to be ten years or less. So we can probably borrow too much because we have to be able to pay it back. So there's something to think about. A decision on the important question, does the city support underwriting Mura? To do the River Street project as Nura will not have the funds right now to take out debt funding on itself. And of course, the Nura Supreme Board would also have to agree. So this has no drawback for the city budget as utility fund debt can still be undertaken where it's desired. However, as a matter of principle, council may decide not to pursue this. Until Nora can do it independently and that's six or seven years away. Which means in that timeframe, we would have to continue to do patch repairs and other things. So.
At at some point somewhere, we had a brief discussion about. Nora being able to borrow money from, or the city could borrow money on behalf of Nora.
Yes.
Get some things done. That's not what you're talking about right now. You're saying the city will pay for these repairs until Nora can?
I'm I'm saying the city could take out the debt or Nora. And tax increment finance money pay the debt. So Nora would be paying the debt, but the city would have to secure it. But that's a decision, that's a council decision. I can go ahead.
So if we talk about the projects from Nora, are we basically talking about River Street? Just fixing that one? We're not talking about anything else on the south side in that in that area?
The recommendation from the Neuro Citizens Advisory Group was to focus on. The River Stream enhancements.
Do we have an idea of what the final cost is going to be for that street?
At this stage, I have a good guess. I don't have a final number and we're going to have that soon. We think about ten million dollars, maybe a little less. This is a complete rebuild.
So over five, six years, you said six, seven years, then we'll have the money to, or paid off to be able to start this project. How long, how much money do you think we would have to spend on River Street in that five or six years, seven years? And plus or minus a thousand dollars.
And honorable councillor Clyde, I cannot do that exact math, but I can see that. If we wait for tax increment financing to have a big enough deposit for them to take the debt themselves. Six years maybe from now. We definitely will be spending many hundreds of thousands of dollars on River Street in the meantime. Because there will be patching work has to happen. There will be house bill, two thousand and one water lines, two of which cross the street that have to be done. But I can't give a more exact number than to say resurfacing second street. Cost a hundred seventy thousand dollars. So I'm imagining several hundred thousand dollars of patching and repairs will will happen in the meantime.
This, I can't wait till we finally have the discussion of the. Bonding portion of the tax and government financing goes. But what is preventing us here? Are you saying we need a deposit of a certain size before we can take out a bond?
Yes, and now Katie, you might have some more information on this, what the exact threshold was that we had to cross. Did you have that with you this evening or?
No, when I spoke to Piper Sandler, who would probably be doing our bond. They said they would have to do a whole workout to see before Nora would have enough money to take out the debt themselves. But looking at the tax increment projections, it would be at least six or seven years out before. It would have anything relative to take out their own funding for the bond. So that's why the city would need to take out the debt for Nora and then Nora just makes the debt payments to the city on that bond. If that makes sense.
But this is one of these big decisions.
Good, Mike. So we would, we would pull the money out of one of the S D C categories, correct? To pay for that and then set up this increment financing and Nora basis back.
Actually, it would go a bit more like this, I suspect. The city would secure a debt, a bond, which would be paid for by Nora. And then a portion of that total expense could still be eligible for city S D Cs. So it wouldn't be borrowing from S D Cs for that one. It would be a separate matter and preserve our S D C cash. For some of the internal ones that we might do. And and there were two possible things.
So just to follow up on that. Are we pretty certain that in seven years? There'll be enough money in Nora that they could actually pay, we could pay off the bond completely and be done with that part of the debt load?
I don't know the answer to that right now. The 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 payment terms would have to be figured out and Katie, do you have an idea of of how long?
I think you were asking if in seven years we could pay off the River Street.
Yes.
No, I don't think so. I think they were looking at a much longer term. For pain, but they were saying they would structure the payments based on our anticipated tax money that was coming in. So they said it would, they would have to do a whole analysis on that, but I think it was a much longer term, seven years from my understanding. But I think that also could depend on the future plans of Nora. So if we wanted to put all of the upfront money to Nora, that maybe could change. How quickly we would pay that off. Or if there was, if we wanted to do this project and have slower payments to pay back the city. There could be other projects going on in Nora still with additional tax money, if that makes sense.
Yes, please.
But I think the question is if we're in principle open to this philosophy of usage funding, not necessarily. Exact structure would have to come back to us for approval at that time and place.
That's the critical question. And is there an appetite to go down this road, design a package, a financial package of this sort? Or is there no appetite for that and instead wait for the natural course of events?
Right, so what is the cost? If we're going to go and have somebody put together some type of financial package, what is approximately, what would be the cost? Because if they put it together, we spend that money and then we go, yeah, we're really not interested. I mean, I would hate to have spent two or three hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars for nothing.
So I'm pretty certain that the cost to figure out if what the bond structure would look like will be a lot less money than that. It's not going to be like an engineering project. And let me look into Katie's eyes for a second.
I'm pretty sure from when I talked to Piper Sandler, they only get paid a certain fee if we close on loan. So I mean, they're willing to do work for you to figure out what structure you want, but they don't take a payment if you don't close a loan.
But the reason why this is a council decision is because it affects the city's overall indebtedness, even though it doesn't affect our utility. Capabilities, we can still do these other things, but it's a, it's a decision point. Jefferson is smiling at us right now. Okay, new information will be presented soon about the oxidation ditch number three project. And council would have to decide if it wants to go ahead with the project. And the water plant at the same time or focus solely on the water plant. And the advantage is it might mitigate the risks of D E Q intervention in the city's construction future. I have received some information from Public Works. And actually, at the time of this slide coming out, right? I'll be bringing you more information about the oxidation ditch. The drawback is obvious. Less money to power building the water treatment plant if we try to do two things at the same time. That's an obvious drawback. What I'm doing is I'm currently working with our new engineering firm to ask. Is it possible for us to do the oxidation project in smaller phases? Because we do have good financial liquidity in our wastewater streams in those two areas, the S D Cs and in cash. Is it possible that we could do a little bit to keep D E Q happy while we focus on the water plant? I don't have the answer to that question yet. That's something that we're thinking about. Or the other alternative would be we do the oxidation ditch first and we do the water plant. Later, if we decide that the consequences are too severe of not doing the oxidation ditch work.
I need to admit this, but I don't remember enough about the oxidation ditch. Would you give us just a recap and maybe for the audience as well?
Absolutely, my pleasure. So what happened was we knew that in the system development charges table. And as the population continues to expand, we would eventually have to add a third oxidation ditch. That's the primary place where human waste is mixed with bacterial agents and oxidizes. Before going through the whole plant to eventually become the solids that we hear so much about. We thought that this was something that could be tackled in the twenty thirties. That was always what I thought. Recently, in May. We received a letter from D E Q. This receipt of this letter became something I knew more about when we started to have our C I P discussions. And that was the advantage of putting everyone in the same room. The letter says that D E Q believes that we have reached the edge of our capability to process. Waste in the wet season, in the periods of our maximum flows, right? Now. The staff believe that if we do not build another lift station, which is a triggering event for D E Q to look at the whole system again. We may have some time on that. However. It depends on how successful we are with our I N I efforts to reduce those winter time flows. I always hoped that we would be able to draw upon our other funds to pay for the water plant and avoid getting into more debt. But this D E Q letter, which I will be showing you this packet of information soon. Brings that into some question of doubt. I've asked Keller Engineering if there's a lesser stage that they could do to increase our sewer capacity. To give us more time. That's one possible solution. Another possible solution is we put off the water treatment plant. And do this D E Q work because we've got the cash to do with cash. But then we don't have the cash to lend ourselves the money later. So that's why this is a, this is a question that we have to decide. If we use the money to build more oxidation processes, we do not have the money to lend ourselves. To do the water plant. That's the calculus. And once the answers to these six questions are known, then I and the finance director can work to build out a plan. Based upon the likely resources that we think will be usable to answer these questions. It's in the finest tradition of American governance that I bring these questions to. With great trust that you'll find the right answers. Once we present more information to make these decisions. These are strategic decisions that need to be known before tactical decisions can be made.
So if we were to do that oxidation one first. What is the drop dead date that the D E Q or the state has told us you have to have this new plant built? What, what's that?
So the, let's take the two plants separately, the water plant and the wastewater plant. The water plant's drop dead day is not a state imposed mandate. It is the risk of having to have hosepipe bans in the mid twenty thirties. Because we will not be able to make enough water to keep up with demand. That's just driven by our growing population. The other risk is D E Q telling us that we cannot add any more infrastructure. Without adding more to our oxidation processes. So there, there's two very different risks that we're looking at. Now, I had always dreamed of getting the water plant built. And having it built with some internal debt service process so as to keep us from having to borrow external money. But this letter that came in May has cast some doubt about that. I will know more when Keller can tell me. Is there a band aid solution? That we can do on the wastewater side. But it might be better to completely look at the whole problem afresh. And choose instead to to do what we can do with cash right now. And know that we have to do the water plant later. But the, but that will mean that when we do the water plant, we'll be coming up on top of those hosepipe bands.
What do you mean by hosepipe bands?
What I mean is that we will not be able to manufacture sufficient potable water. In the hot summer months to keep up with demand. Because our old plant will not be able to make six, six and a half megagallons a day. And so that will become. That will be challenging for people because we will have to have some enforced measures at that point.
That's what you mean, in Scottish, I guess. But it's just, you're gonna like, say, no watering of lawns would be an example of a.
Yes.
A measure that might be taken because of the shortage of water.
It's a shortage of our ability to make water, no shortage of actual water.
True, okay.
We were very, very blessed to have a massive aquifer and it's been thoroughly investigated. So I don't want anyone listening at home to get the wrong idea. We're not talking about. We don't have enough supply. It's our production capability that's got a limit in it.
So. Could we, if we're going to be looking at this, this, putting some type of financial package together, could we? Also look at, and maybe Katie already knows about this, something where we add both of them together and do. A bond measure that we spread out for a long period of time. I, I hate increasing taxes. But I understand that this is a major thing that I think we could sell. So could we look at that also and say, okay, this is, this is how much, it's not a huge amount, but this is how much, and we could do both. Or it's not going to cost that much because we can throw a bunch of cash that we have in there, something like that.
So we could look at that idea, but we're talking about. Forty five to fifty million dollars all at once. Now, yes, there is a lot of cash that we can blend into that. But it's a, it's a big slice of pie to eat all at once. It's not, it's not impossible, however. And if that's the direction we want to go, we will figure out how to do it the most efficiently that we can. Using the most of our own internal resources that we can. Katie and I were talking earlier today about maybe the idea of a ballooning loan structure. Where initially we work on S T C revenue, we pay those back first. And then the commercial loan increases after that payback. To take up the burden, something like that. But. I think I'd like to want to hear what Keller has to say first about, is there a band aid? Or do we want to do the thing we can afford to do with cash now and come back and get the water plant later? But. I hope to still be here. So at that point, there may be hosepipe bands twenty thirty five, you know, that's. That's the threat on the war plan.
All right, well, thank you. We, this is some.
We, uh, this is something we're gonna have a work session on, obviously. And we've got a lot more questions than just a few that we've already asked today. So if it's all right with everybody, we've got one more item on the agenda. I'd like to go ahead and power through and finish the meeting. If you would prefer, we can take a quick break. All right, let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, one tactic we can look at, no matter what we do, is looking at how we do our rates slightly differently as councillor Kilburg asked us to. So that was one concept, right? We could have a rates line item that's specifically dedicated to one type of thing that we're building, for example. Messaging the public and explaining why rates need to be increased if we do some of these things, obviously that's gonna be something we have to look at. And given the future burden of the NERPs pension plan set to get worse over time on the general fund, of course, you guys all know, there's no magic solutions here that could come from general fund transfers. Because as we have more NERPs retirees, the burden on the general fund is going to increase over time. Lastly, it's worth noting that the final likely cost of these massive capital projects won't really fully be known until engineering design work has completed. Engineering design work does cost hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront. And I've had lots of questions, so maybe, is that, are we good for now, or? Thank you most kindly.
So Will, while you're there, the very first item that we looked at, the resolution adopting the utility billing policy, do you want us to go ahead and vote on this today?
You can if you'd like to. It was just an informational one today, but.
That's what I thought, but, or, or.
Yeah, we didn't have an RCA, but it'll come back, I think, in a month. It's said to come back.
So the last item on our agenda is the ARPA money reapplication.
Yep, sorry.
Come enjoy these objects, Nick, there's. Okay, so here we go. I think there was a slight children, yeah?
Nope, it was like two.
Any public comment?
Nope.
So we, we find ourselves in a situation where we have some remaining ARPA funds that have not been spent. Given the short span of time that now remains for ARPA to complete, and given the risk of funds needing to be returned to the federal government, staff is recommending the following two steps, henceforth called the ARPA closeout actions. Step one is to inform the two remaining projects that the funds will be redirected as their projects are incomplete and at this stage not capable of being completed because there's not enough time left and we gave them all the time we could. The funds would be redirected to other projects listed in this motion. Step two would be to give spending authority to dedicate the remaining ARPA funds to a list of smaller capital projects which in total match the remaining fund amount. Several ARPA projects came in under budget while a small number of others failed or ended early or incomplete, leaving the city with a reserve of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will, it will need to encumber or return to the federal government. And attachment one, it listed the main sources of this revenue. Having polled department heads, there were a number of very useful capital projects related to different buildings or programs that could be so dedicated so as to use this allocation wisely. Some of the projects, like e-ticketing system, were pursued earlier via grant, fortunately granted, worked out. Geotechnical exploration is listed to try to choose the cheapest of the two possible sites or a water plant. And no matter what we decide to do on water plant, et cetera, knowing which site is the better site is something that's not gonna change. So once we know that, it's gonna inform our decision-making whenever we make it. A better site means less concrete pylons, which could save us a great deal of money. The actions would allow a series of excellent enhancements to occur to our services and buildings without any impact on the city's normal budget. And two main sources of income amongst the others were the social goods street seats has an undistributed amount of twenty thousand dollars and the North Valley Friends Providence MOU number two has a sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's in the mixture. Now, the people in charge of those projects were already informed that this deliberation would happen this evening. And the pastor from the church has said she understands that it's, there is truly. Here is a list of proposed projects. And if you have questions about these, I wanted to have people who understand them because obviously we had to move fairly quickly to get to this point before we ran out of time. Repairing the crumbling stairs at the library, adding a ramp on the north side of the building to make the building more ADA compliant, perhaps about fifty thousand dollars. And understand, we don't have quotes for these things yet because we have to rush and do them quickly. But we do have a quote for the ticketing upgrade. Two to three new HVAC units at public safety building, possible cost fifty thousand. One large scale HVAC unit at the wastewater treatment plant, perhaps eighty thousand. IT server or mail appliance upgrades, depending on what we can do first, about eighty thousand. Carpentry to add a door and modify some other doors at the public safety building, ten thousand. NDPD electronic ticketing upgrade, one hundred and nine thousand dollars. And then sixty-five thousand dollars of a total amount slightly over a hundred thousand for Keller to do explorations at the alternative possible water plant site. So these are the things we're looking at. If we end up with a small amount of money left over after these things are done, we'll seek to spend every penny that we can on small ten thousand here, twenty thousand dollars here to make sure we don't return any money to the federal government. And are there any questions about these concepts?
Oh, we've got two questions here. The first is the ARPA money. Let's start, ask Mike about the return of the ARPA money first, and we can do a lot of the second part. And myself, the first question I have is, what about the, I remember the Orange Brothers just stole the money?
Yep.
So has, are we working to return that? Are there any others, uh, projects that did not complete their, their required action?
There, it is, I think it would be fair to take the legal jeopardy to say that Orange Brothers stole the money and prepared to take that risk. And there are, there is one other project that did not complete. It's what it was given an original tranche of money for. And the decision to try to pursue the money from Orange Brothers, I'll take that first, that would have had to have gone through the normal court system. It couldn't go to the small claims court, which I explored because the dollar amount was too large. So we might end up spending more money than we could get to actually collect it. I have everything documented in the file if the federal government audits us to show that we believe the money was stolen without any court case having happened. And the other project, which is the incomplete North Valley Friends church structures, that would be something we need to discuss, I think, another time. What, what actions we want to do, certainly asking, do they have an intention to return the money? I do intend to ask. But after that, we would have to decide what steps we would take if we want to take any steps. And that, and I think we would need some legal advice on that.
Really, do the councillors have other questions? All right, Mike.
So with North Valley, how much money could we get back that, I mean, should come back to us other than what is listed here? Is there some, you're indicating there's some additional, so I was just, was kinda curious about that.
So there, there were two MOUs for that project and the first one was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the construction of a cottage cluster, which did not occur.
Like.
My, my question is about a different subject in this. Is anyone else having, I don't know how many, it's not about.
Oh.
Is that a, can I still ask a different?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, can you explain, because my brain is still at the unfunded SRO that I wanna make sure that we continue? Can this be used, I know the answer, I think, but can this be used to reimburse ourselves for the lost money from that SRO contract?
It could, in a very short term sense, some of the money could be used for that purpose. And many cities chose to backfill operational revenues with ARPA dollars. This council and other councils never thought that that was a wise idea, that we should pay our bills as we go. But yes, that's, that's an alternative concept.
I agree. I just think that this is a slightly different scenario with, we were anticipating to receive back the breach of the MOU that they're not getting back, so. I don't wanna see the SROs go away, and so I just am nervous about.
For this financial year, there is no plan even to, to take away SROs. There, there's not, there's not even a desire to take away SROs at all. It depends on the general fund's health as described in an earlier agenda item.
Okay, just for clarity, so I read we have about four hundred and fifty thousand of ARPA funds that will become available, that will, okay. And yet only a hundred and fifty is mentioned from North Valley. Why is the other two hundred and fifty thousand in question? That's part of one of my questions.
So the funds that I am discussing tonight have nothing whatsoever to do with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was, was awarded for MOU number one to build the cottage cluster. That's, that's a separate matter and would have to be pursued, seeking some form of remedy, if that's the will of council. So the, these revenues came from either projects that were under budget or that some did not complete. And that's where the revenue came from. And the appendices in the packet list some of the major revenue sources, although there was also some interest blended in here as well.
So the two hundred and fifty thousand is not certain that we will get it back? Is that what you're saying?
So the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was already issued, that's a separate matter and one that we should seek legal counsel about, I suspect. The hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the second part, that has never been dispersed. And so that is in amongst all these other monies.
Okay, thank you. I won't ask why then on the two fifty. Um, can ARPA monies be used to retire debt or reduce debt?
Oh, no. I nearly said yes, but I didn't. No, the ARPA final rule says that no, no debt reduction can be used with any ARPA dollars. How I wish it were otherwise.
All right, go ahead.
So I, I would like to see James look into, what would it be? What would we have to do in order to get that two hundred and fifty thousand back? I mean, I don't wanna put a hardship on the church, but there is consequences to actions if you don't follow through with something and maybe set up some type of a plan. But I don't wanna get into this situation where we get brought into some type of lawsuit going back where it doesn't, wouldn't pay for us to go down that road, I don't think. But I think we should look, counsel, I think we should look at to try and get that back.
So I think you have a good point there. Shall we, shall we decide to ask the city manager to pursue, looking into how much wasn't spent and whether or not it's available to be returned in the work, city number? Is that enough, Will? You want about?
No, I think I have enough and I certainly was going to do a soft reach out to begin with.
I'm sure you're gonna begin with whatever filings they have given you and show how the money to this point has been spent and that, that's the difference. So let's move on to the second part of this. The four hundred and fifty thousand that we know we're gonna get, we're just trying to allocate now. I would like to remind the council that we had a very long meeting. We had some citizens come in who felt that they had a good claim towards unexpended money, ARPA funds. And we flat told them that these funds are going to go to the water treatment plant. And one of the items that they're asking about is definitely part of that water treatment plant. We'll see, check in the, the, the sort of, so let's deliberate and decide what you want. But bear in mind, that's going to be my position. Who would like to start?
Okay, you're saying instead of Will's list, use it all for the water treatment plant? So the HVAC, the library, all that, put it towards the water treatment plant? Is that what you're saying?
That is what we said, what we're gonna do with the money when we talk, we had some. They want to make a very impassioned pleas as to the way they felt that they had the opportunity. The city had no more right to this money than, than anybody else. I mean, that's not quite true, but I, I don't see the difference here. The items that we're talking about are definitely needed, can be put into the budget for next year if there is, if, if they can be, and we can get into this, so I'm sorry, I'm making an argument.
Hey?
Well.
So the, the only thing is that with the timeline that remains to us, I definitely can expend the money to do the geotechnical scoping. I, I'm probably going to time out before I can get Keller to, to do any more work towards the water plant with the remaining balance, so.
Well, it's a timeline. I, I know you said that you had to spend it this year, but I believe you have to aggregate it this year, spend it next year. Is that true?
Yes, that's true. But, but then we would be committing definitively to doing water plant design for next year. Before we go for sure, there are many variables. It's possible, so.
All right.
When we decided to put money towards the water treatment plant, we were, because we knew we had a plan. That's why we decided, but then that fell apart. So now we, we have to, we have to spend this by a certain time, so I think we have to pivot.
The geotechnical piece has to be done regardless of when we do work, at some point anyway, correct?
One hundred percent correct.
And how much would you venture to guess that will cost?
I, I don't have to venture because Keller have proven to be men of their word. So it, it's just over a hundred thousand dollars to do a really thorough scoping of the other site. That involves full depth corrings down to bedrock, analyzing the sediment to see if that's a better site than the other site, which we discovered was not a very good sign.
Lee.
For all of these projects that you're proposing, projects that you would anticipate to do within the next, say, two years through our own new sources outside of ARPA, that would make me feel happy, that it would reduce operational costs in the next two years?
I would say most of them for sure. I'm not sure if PD intended to do e-ticketing if the grant doesn't come from another grant source or, what would be your word on that, gentlemen?
We don't have the money. We don't have it budgeted. So this hundred and nine thousand would go to that, Dave, your timeline? If we receive funding, I'll have the lion's share of it done by, by the end of this year.
Oh, I guess my point is, though, this is something you would want to see happen in the next couple of years, that you would advocate to budget in the next couple of years.
We've been trying to.
Thank you.
In this for several years.
Thank you.
But Mike.
So, I, I don't remember all the conversation. Rachel, is it easy to somehow go into the system and pull up and give us a snapshot of the conversation that we actually had about it at that council meeting at that time? Because I kind of feel like if we said that that's, it was definitive that that's what we were going to do and we either voted on it or the majority of the council was giving their agreement, then I, I kind of feel like we should stick to our word and do that. Although I'm seeing from, from your point of view too, councillor. So, I'm, I'd like to really, I'd like to hear if we can or know what did we say?
I can certainly pull up the minutes and see if it's in there, and we do have a recording of that meeting. I believe it was before my time, but we can see, there should be a recording and minutes from that meeting that we could review, but it will take some time.
I can see I remember the discussions very clearly. We thought we were on the cusp of building a water plant. We thought it would have been underwheeled many months before this month, and we were going to dedicate these funds for that purpose. Then the costs expanded and it brought the project to a close prematurely, so there was a change. And, I mean, I don't know if I can put money on account with Keller for future engineering work not done. And if I would satisfy the ARPA, I don't rule, I have my doubts, but.
Just want to ask this again, that geotechnical work, geotech work is water treatment plant work. It's preliminary, but it, it has to be done. Okay.
100% because what our hopes are, by coring the sediment a little bit further away from the river, we're hoping that the soil is just a better profile and it would therefore indicate a cheaper location to build a water plant.
Right.
So, I, I agree with Peggy. I think we should do the geotech part because it's got to get done. But I, I think I'd like to wait a little bit to see exactly what. I know we were thinking about because of doing that plant, and it's kind of has blown up a portion of costs. But every little bit kind of helps. I, I don't know. I don't know. I'd like to still see what our conversations is.
Lee.
What's the last date that you, I know, send in the year that you have to report by, but what is the last date that you need from us before you? Because I feel like we're going to be on the verge of sending back 350,000.
Well, you're here right now, and I'm sorry for, I'm sorry, no intention to rush everyone. I was trying to get these projects every month that they could have to feasibly do their, their work. And that's why I left it to this late stage. If we don't make this decision till next month, I can't promise you I can get quotes for these things fast enough to get them done in time.
So, the total on this list that you gave us is about 446,000. So, we had the geotech. Now, we're, we're over what we have by about 100. I would like to propose that we definitely do that piece. And then perhaps you could talk to your department managers and prioritize the, the remainder so we don't go, you know, to reduce that list by 100,000. That, that be an idea, a good idea?
Let me, let me restate that just for clarity. No, I, I think I'm, I think I'm catching what you're throwing out. So, what, what you're saying is have the ARPA pay as much as it can for the, for the geotech survey, just over 100,000, and work with the department heads to scale back some of these other things to make it fit the envelope of the money that we have left. That, that can be accomplished.
I thought the geotech stuff was included with all the other projects for 45. You sent an email saying.
The geotech, the geotech is in here, but in this proposal as written, I was going to take an additional $38,000 from already budgeted CIP revenue. So, this would save some other rates paid for revenue if it's all entirely ARPA money for the geotech. And we would scale something else back, and I would have some difficult conversations with department heads about what that scale back would look like.
Well, I know in my opinion, I, I'd like you to go ahead and proceed with the project. We know we're always our water treatment plant project. I'd like you to give us as much time as you can, maybe continue to move forward with the other projects, get your quotes, so that we can make that decision, you know, by December, be legal and, and spend the money next year. Can we, can we look at it that way?
Yeah, because. Well, if, if we are following the path that councillor Kilburg suggested, then I'll just look to maybe buy one less HVAC or something to make the numbers true up. So, I, I know I can do that if I get your authorization. If I, if I come back, then I'll do my best, but we may run out of time.
Right.
So, I've been sitting here racking my brain, trying to go back and remember. And I, I do seem to think that when we found out that this cost was going to be 45, $50 million, we decided at that point, I believe, to wait and put it on down the road because we're going to need to come up with some, with some funds. I think the HVAC, the, the e-ticketing, the, this engineering that needs to be done, I think the 450,000 that we have from the ARPA, I think we should just spend it, get these projects taken care of because it's not even going to be a drop in the, in the bucket of, of things. But I think, I mean, when you look at trying to fix HVACs on down the road, they're expensing pieces of equipment. I think we should just go ahead and, and get these projects done because we have a long ways to go of coming up with some better planning on, on the other part of the line here.
Oh.
Make a motion. Okay, I move that we allow city staff to carry out the two listed ARPA closeout actions authorizing the listed expenditures.
Second. Okay, and move that seconded that we pavement list as, as they presented. Is there any further discussion? Okay.
My question, Will, is where are we with the cover to the current water plant? Is that, has that already been spent?
Okay, that's, we're on this. We have a motion on the table. Uh, sorry. Is there any discussion on the motion or we have some? I have one point to make, and that is that you're going to have the dance academy and one of the animal shelters back in here at the next council meeting saying, wait a minute. We were in first in line for that ARPA fund money, so that's my reservation. We told them that we were going to use that money for the, for the water treatment plant. I want this money spent before the end, too. I did not want to give it back. That's my caution. So, any further discussion?
Yeah, since you said that, so what's your solution? What's your proposal outside of this? I don't feel like, I mean, I think all of us agree that that's unfortunate, but what, what solution do you have to bring today?
No, that's, that's, that's a very good point. It's a saving point. We don't want to risk losing this money. Okay, any other, any further discussion? And all in favor of the motion on the table, which is to proceed with the items that were brought to us, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I think all opposed same time.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Will. That good?
Yes, can, can I ask for one additional possibility? If we're able to get the HVACs cheaper because we're about to explode into action, is there any issue with using a bit more of the money that's, that remains for the water plant study? Just, just to honor councillor Kilburg's idea, if I can get some of these things done more cheaply, because we're going to try to do them cheaply. I assume there'd be no issue with that, just for the minutes. Thank you most kindly. I feel like I've brought you so many big things tonight. I'm sorry. This, this is the deal.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that is the last item on our agenda. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Maybe there's a jury.